The invocation of Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Councilmember Reesner.
As we gather here today, let's take a moment to acknowledge the diverse perspectives and voices that make up our city. We come from different backgrounds with different experiences and beliefs, but we share a common goal: to create a vibrant, equitable, and thriving community for all. In this chamber, may we approach our discussions with open minds, respectful dialogue, and a shared commitment to the well-being of our city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Sorry. Councilmember Reesner?
Here.
Councilmember Snae?
Here.
Councilmember Thacker?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Herniman? Councilmember Kaler? Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Let the record show that five of seven councilmembers are present. The minutes from the February 202024 regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any corrections, substitutions, deletions? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. We're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner?
No report, Madam President.
Law and Community Planning, is there somebody who has a report from that committee?
No report, Madam President.
Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones?
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. The Personnel and Labor Relations Committee held a meeting in city chambers on February 26, 2024. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss Mayor's request for legislation number 24-13. This is a reappointment to the Planning Commission and any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Hayes and John Kaler. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and Law Director Zachary Fowler. Councilmember, Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:21 PM. Councilman Kaler asked about the appointee. City Administrator Dutrow commented on the appointee's history with the commission and experience with zoning law. Dutrow also explained the details of the Planning Commission, including frequency of meetings. Kaler motioned to draft legislation approving the reappointment to the Planning Commission. Hayes seconded in the motion carried on a vote of two to zero. In other business, Hayes asked about the committee meeting for future appointments. Law Director Fowler explained the roles of Mayor and Council President in business being assigned to the committee. And Dutrow commented on steps a committee chair can take during a city council meeting to have legislation repaired. With no other business, the meeting adjourned at 5:32 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Snae?
No report at this time, Madam President.
There is no report for Streets, Sidewalks, and Sewers Committee and Economic Development and Downtown Planning.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay. We're now under the reports of the officers. His mayor, Mayor, his honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start off this evening with a proclamation. It is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. So in light of that, we have this proclamation. Whereas individuals with developmental disabilities share a vision for a good life, and whereas each individual has abilities, skills, and talents to enrich the community and people around them, and whereas individuals with and without developmental disabilities live and work side by side across our country to form strong, diverse communities, and whereas the most effective way to increase developmental disability awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for people with disabilities that include full access to education, support, housing, employment, and recreational activities, and therefore be resolved that I, Lee Wilkinson, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 in the City of Tiffin, Ohio, as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and encourage all members of the community to take the time to get to know someone with the disability and what he or she has to offer on this fourth day of March in the year of our Lord 2024. I'd like to present this proclamation to the members who are here from the Seneca County.
Yeah, we can move the podium, too. Okay.
I'll start by saying thank you very much, Council. We are proud of being part of the Tiffin community and the support that Tiffin community gives our program. We are currently under bid now for, hopefully we'll be under bid. We've got the bids in. We're waiting to review and have them approved for the transformation and renovations of the old cancer center. And we will be moving the Adult Day Program and our Services and Support Administration offices into those two buildings with the third building and that being a day program for folks to go to. So we're excited about that because we do have a growing need for services for children. Children with autism are one of the largest growing communities throughout the nation, but we are growing significantly in Seneca County. We've grown 25% in the last four years, mostly children, for the first time in the history. Since I've been part of the program, we're serving an equal amount of children as we are adults and a lot of children with significant behaviors. So we want to be here for the community, to help people thrive and be part of the community, so we're thankful of that. I've got a couple of folks that want to make a couple of announcements. Bill, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everybody. My name is Bill Young. I need your help.
I can help you. Can I introduce where you're from? You're part of Project Stir, right?
I'm from Project Stir, and also I'm a Project Stir teacher. And prom...
Prom Sunday?
Prom Sunday.
Drive-through?
Drive-through.
Ham and chicken dinner. Ham and chicken dinner.
Seneca Dinner.
At the Seneca County Opportunity Center.
Seneca Opportunity Center.
On Sunday, March 24th.
On March 24th.
With pickup times from 11:00 to 1:00 PM.
The pickup time is 1:00 PM.
And then meals are $12 per meal.
We owe... You owe $12 for the meal.
And then pre-orders only through March 11th.
Pre-orders March 11th.
To order, please call Joan at 419-447-7521, extension 1134.
Could you give that number? Oh, I'm sorry. Give that number one more time.
Sure. It's 419-447-7521, extension 1134. We'll give extra flyers as well.
Oh, great.
And then you can email, and then you want to say make checks payable to Act. Say checks payable to Act.
Advocacy.
That's good. You did good. Good job. Let John talk a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Dennis. I know you. My name is John Davanna. I work at, I mean, I got a communion job at Cinemark, tearing tickets. And I love that.
I'd like to be with you, John.
Well, this is coming March, I think. I think that's today. I think it's gonna be my 18th year. I think I'm gonna have an anniversary celebration, I guess.
So you've got a couple of announcements?
Yeah.
Binkery Bingo.
The day, I read, in March 26 is Binkery Bingo. The door opened at 5:00 PM. And the bingo starts at 5:30. And they get $5 a card. And it's gonna be 50/50 raffles.
And then what does, where does the money go towards?
The school.
For unity?
For the unity next year. I'm going to, the unit conference is at Solma Creek every year. I think Cynthia Point bought it. Now it's a seedster creek.
So we are unique in the sense that we have a conference every year that is planned by self-advocates. So they plan the menu, they plan the speakers, and then they go to a conference every year and end up with a big dance to celebrate for next year, right?
Yes.
It's a lot of work, isn't it?
It's a lot of work, but we have fun with our friends.
And what's the game coming up? You got it right here. Celebrity basketball.
This, I don't know, March 14th. It was 31st. It's on Saturday. It was on Saturday.
That was last, a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago. And United, March 14, they had, it's there.
7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM.
Doors open at 7:00?
Door open at 6:00 at the Heilberg Gym.
Seberlin Gym?
Seberlin Gym.
It's easier to say hi to them.
Celebrity game is a funny event. I encourage everybody to participate. It's a great community event. Unlike many programs across the state, I mean, it is really the community all coming together and folks with disabilities playing with local athletes, local officials. If you don't want to play basketball, just come and cheer. I guarantee it will change your, change your heart. It's a great place. It's a great thing to do. And so the proceeds from that help fund Special Olympics. It's free, but the proceeds from the concessions and selling t-shirts and those kind of things. Anything else you want to add?
Starting in March, I'm going in April, I might, the sports, Special Olympics here. I'm gonna be doing bungee ball.
Oh, nice.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. I have a couple more things.
Go ahead.
All right. Well, continuing the mayor's report, I have a couple more things. We're planning a community cleanup prior to the April eclipse, and information is out there now on the city's Facebook page. You should be able to look that up and find the events that you can click on and sign up for that. So looking forward to a lot of participation in that event. Try to get signed up as soon as you can. Let us know if you need dust pans and brooms. Let's see, what else do we have? Aqua still has plans to begin work to replace water lines starting as early as this week on Madison Street, parts of Melmore Street, and parts of Miami Street.
Thank you for coming.
Main Street will also be closed through traffic between Jefferson and Circular for sewer installation. And beginning Monday, that's today, today and tomorrow, there will be temporary land closures on North Sandusky Street between Hall Street and Tom Street, as well as near the Six's Corners in preparation for the North Sandusky Street project. Also, congratulations to Brandon Burner for receiving the grant from the Ohio Division of Forestry that he applied for. Did a lot of work for that one. And this grant's programs include purchasing and planting trees for the public benefit. Okay, I would like to now turn it over to Bryce Coon to give us an update on the Parks and Rec Department.
All right. Good evening, Council. New faces. I'm Bryce Coon. I'm the Parks Director. Thank you a lot for having me speak tonight with this yearly report. Every year, we, Park Board as well as department recognizes Individuals and Volunteers of the Year. Literally hundreds of volunteers put forth a tremendous amount of effort in making our parks, programs, and our community a better place to live, work, and play. Alan Bilger has volunteered with the department now for a couple of years. Alan has given much of his time helping with our summer camps. He is the master when it comes to building rockets. Alan comes out for the entire week to help instruct the camp on the proper way to glue, pack the parachutes, and load the engines for each camper's rockets. He's one who will go the extra mile for the kids during this week-long camp. Not only does he help build the rockets, he also brings out his entire rocket launching pad during the final day, so each kid will have the opportunity to launch their own rocket in the center of the oval at Hedgesbury Park. Funny story, our first year we did this, Mason, Correll, the Rec Operations Manager, myself, ordered the wrong rockets. They weren't Alan Bilger-approved. So it just goes to show, he took 70 rockets back to his house, put his wife Marcia to work with them. They stayed up till 2:00 AM, cleaning the rockets, gluing their right tip wings on, so that way they were ready to go the next day to launch. So that is just kind of the passion that Alan has for this, but also for the kids in the community. So after that being said, Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the board, would like to congratulate Alan Bilger as the recipient of the 2023 Tiffin Parks and Recreation Volunteer of the Year. Yes, we'll grab a quick picture if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Alan.
Well, thank you.
Marcia, thank you.
She has to put up with me.
So yeah, so they, just a really good partnership we have with Alan from over the years. He does a lot more than just our camps. He partners with the Boy Scouts of America. He goes down to Delaware.
Look Lazarus.
Lazarus and...
Lazarus there on 50, just off of 23.
23, yeah. Yeah, so he definitely has a passion for it and just a genuine nice guy, which is awesome. That's what we're here to present the award on. So thank you again, Alan and Marcia. Thank you. Very good. So with that, you guys are more than welcome to leave if you would like. I'm just gonna give the rest of my presentation. Cool. Thank you very much. All right. Liz, if you would like to queue it up. Perfect. Just turn the screen my way, maybe. There it is. Cool. Perfect. So last year, Capitol Projects, if you haven't entered, coming in off the north side of the Hedgesbury Park, you'll see there used to be a row of pine trees that lined the sidewalk going down the hill. Last year, we were able to acquire two grants. One was a Meschick Frost Foundation Grant, which is through the PNC Bank, and then also the Lupton Foundation through the Community Foundation helped pay for that $64,000 project. We had a lot of erosion happening on that wall, on the hillside there, and it was running down and impacting the trail system at the bottom of the hill there. So with that, we were able to do our retaining wall, add some nice landscaping just this past November, and some arboretum. So hopefully with time, that will kind of grow and create a different scenery into hedges. So along with that, the lettering we did locally, too, with Arnold Machine. So really happy with how that project turned out, and it actually is helping us down below in the lower end of the park with drainage and water runoff. So when we queue it up? Perfect. There it is, if you haven't seen it yet. So along with that, we did do some capital purchases. We did, every year we update kind of a circle, different pieces of equipment. We're ones to believe about three to four years, turning your equipment, you have better resale, trade-in value, rather than burning it till there's nothing in it. So, and we like the latest and the greatest, let's be real. So we were able to change our Wham! mower, which if you're out at hedges during the daytime or any outer parks, you'll see our big 11-foot wide mowers. The flails come down nicely. We'll rotate those about every four to five years. Those are $85,000 to $90,000 mowers. So if we can turn those in every four to five years, we're getting $20,000 to $25,000 in trade-in value back. So $40,000 is a little easier to swallow than $90,000, right? And with that, we also purchased a tool cab, which is, if you're familiar with, it's a Bobcat. But it's a Bobcat mixed with a, like a off-road UT, like ATV type of thing. It has a three-point hitch that allows us to do a little bit more as far as ballfield drags, plowing the snows, the trails, and a lot more like aerating and plugging the yards because it is a controlled cab with doors. So those are kind of our three big purchases for last year. Go ahead, Liz. Last year's events. We have our Oakley Park Cleanup. Gosh, we're going on, I think, number, year 11. With that one, that's April every year. We had our Pitch Hit and Run Competition. There was over 43 participants for that. Our Band Bash, which ended up having to get canceled because of weather. We had the TNT's at E-Screen, which is a big hit. We started that back up in 2021. We had some extra funds in our special events line, and just thinking, how could we utilize the E-Screen facility in the amphitheater and put that together? And I think it's been a big community hit, something to do, and ties in nicely with the Third Thursday events that downtown is putting on as well. We have our Special Needs Community Days. Those are every Thursday in the summer at the Outer Pool, and from 11:30 to 1:00 PM before the pool opens up, it's their own time to swim. Family, anybody that's of special needs is able to utilize that time. Our NOPAC 4th of July slash bicentennial event was a big hit. We had our car show. We had over 65 cars the first year. The second year, we had 96. So we keep improving that, improving and taking more acreage up for that one car show. It's pretty fun. And then Yoga at the E-Screen. Yoga Chuck is knocking that out of the world. We're there Saturday mornings, 9:00 AM. And then always our Fishing Derby, which is a good timeout at the Isaac Walton League. Day Camp's a big date there at the bottom. Registration is April 5 at 9:00 AM this year. Last year, we filled up three of our camps within 4 minutes and 22 seconds. We brought in nearly, I think it was $17,000 within like 15 minutes of us going live. So that shows you the importance that our departments has for this community, but also I think kind of shows how good of a program that Mason Correll puts on with our day camp instructors as well. So I kudos that, him and his team for knocking that out and always being up to date and changing the camps around and making them fun for everybody. For camps, or excuse me, for events this year, there's the dates. Our Oakley Park Cleanup, 9:00 AM on the 20th of this, of April. We're actually opening the pool up on Memorial Day at 1:00 PM. You know, with the way it's going, we might be opening earlier. We have a Fishing Derby scheduled for June 1. Our TNT's will start up at the E-Screen on the 20th of June. As always, our NOPAC Party is on the 4th of July, which is actually the 4th of July. And then wrapping up the season, the pool closing up on the 11th of August. So our revenues for last year. Pool memberships, they sold for $10 a membership. That's correct, $10 for the entire summer. You could have a membership to the Outer Pool. We sold 1,695. Simple math, we like that. And then day admissions, those are mainly the family reunions that rent the shelters out, but also pool rentals that would happen as well. We would throw the monies into that. So day camps normally were $16,000. We bring in revenues. Last year, we brought in $22,426. Shelter rentals, anywhere from $14,000 to $18,000. Yet last year, we were actually at $14,000. So we had $2,000 increase to that. And then our food trucks and concession stand, food trucks are 4th of July events, basically, as well as our concession stand. We do contract that out with the local business. We brought in $4,100 essentially for that. So we were definitely not a break-even department, so we thank Council for allowing us to continue to what we do because we know we're definitely a service community and a service department. So thank you all for your support in our programs and our events. It definitely goes to show with the numbers that come through our department with all of our events and day camps. So any questions, Councilmembers, that you may have?
Councilmember Reesner?
For the, you said that the mower...
Yes.
Get rid of it before it wears out. Have you considered leasing as a...
As an option?
As a cost-effective option?
I don't know how that works in financial world.
Kathy's job.
We lease it. We're gonna pay interest on it.
Okay.
In the long run.
Yeah.
Pay more.
Yeah, looking at different options to do. I know, I think, some of our larger equipment, I'm sure we have done that before in the past. So, yeah.
Historically, the city hasn't really done leasing, and for exactly that reason, we are very conscious of the interest that would be paid or anything like that. With that said, we are piloting that with a few things. Public Works has some equipment that we've considered leasing for, items that we don't use a lot or, you know, makes sense to be able to swap that out for better models because, because we don't use it that often. You know, do we keep on that expense on our books for major pieces of equipment? So things to consider in the future, and, you know, we may look at that in the future as budgets allow. Okay. And also, just a point of comment, Dion, you look at, let's see, Finley's Green Space and Fremont's Green Space, and look at Tiffin, we do have a tremendous amount of well-managed park systems. So kudos to your department for keeping, keeping things great. It's, it helps with the health of the community. It helps in so many ways. For the Oakley Park Cleanup, the CERT team, which I'm also on, we're gonna be there. And if anybody wants to come, we're gonna have some food, too. So if that draws more people, April 20.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
What I understand, you...
What I understand, you're supplementing the Tiffin YMCA's pool renovation with availability on the pool in the park?
Yes, yeah. So right now, we had discussed opening, they'll be operating the pool from 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. Before we actually open for the season. In lieu of that, they'll be obviously paying for the extra chemicals as well as the staff for their time that they would be using it. Obviously, that's weather depending too.
Right.
And how soon we can open the pool and get it prepped and everything of sorts like that.
So that'll be within your dates that you listed? The 5/27?
Yes, for community, yeah, for our community swim, yes, the 27th is when we will open that. But for the Y would be, I think it's May 4th or May 6th. It's the first Monday of May is tentative. But again, that goes all depending on how April hits us, and if we're able to get out there and power wash and clean the leaves and everything, prep it ready to go and put the pumps in. It's about a two-and-a-half-week process to get the pool all de-winterized and ready to go. So, yeah, we're kind of just playing that back and forth with the context of the Y. And then they will also be extending the season to, we close the 11th, they'll be going to Labor Day.
Okay.
So kind of on the backside as well, too. Like I said, there's no additional expense for us as a city. I'm just going to invoice them every month with what the chemical expense is for their extra days.
Yep, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Perfect. Well, I'll see you all on April 20th out at Oakley Park. Bring your rakes. And some gloves, but it's a fun time. Cindy does a tremendous job, and it's just nice to meet the local neighbors. Definitely, they take pride in that park, and it goes to show. So thank you all again for your support over the years, looking forward to this coming summer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing the mayor's report, I'd like to introduce Deb Reamer from Human Resources.
All right, thank you. No props this year. I did see Steve Leopard and promised him. I said, no props because you're not here. I appreciate that. All right, this is a review for 2023. Mine's not near as fun as Bryce's because there's a lot, obviously, you know my position, there's things I do that I'm not able to talk about. So that's just a position in the role that you're aware of. So if we want to go to number two, Liz, slide two. All right, when in human resources, you never know what's going to happen each day, which is kind of a good thing, honestly. Some days can be filled with surprises, and others are better than the last, for sure. It's all in the approach and the perception, the way it comes across. It may not be the intent, but the impact that it leaves, and I preach that at every orientation schedule that I do with individuals, to tell them, be very guarded when you're in a room of people because everybody knows everybody. So be careful, your words can be hurtful sometimes, and maybe positive the next. Listening is key, for sure, in the position that I do. Looking at all sides and willing to understand others may see things differently and understand why that may be best. City departments, listing all the departments as we have here, as you can see, we have numerous staff and numerous departments for this big city. So I put on there Parks and Rec, and Bryce knows, I said, we're looking forward to this. I'm waiting for you to give me that call. It's this time of year that we get, hey, we're going to hire all these people. So it's a big crunch. So, you know, you're looking at the upload of 27 seasonal staff. And that's good clues. In the later slide, you'll see some of those are reoccurring. They're going to come back, returning employees, and some of those are going to be brand-new staff. But Mason and Bryce are great. You do that drive. It's very helpful to tell us when they come out. I broke down the 8/11, so I know the final date. So I was glad to hear that this year. It's nice to know that ahead of time. All right, you have that for me, Liz. Thank you. All right, ins and outs for 2023. New hires for 2023, full-time were 11. We were very busy, and Samantha Sugar can tell you that in the payroll department. And part-time was 11. Outs for 2023, you're going to see full-time, you're going to see full-time 13, and you're going to see the part-time 7. I want to explain that a little bit. When you look at the outs, it looks like a tremendous number. Well, we had five people retire, okay, which is pretty big. And then when you look at the part-time, we had six individuals leave council. So now we have new individuals in for this year. So you'll see that report next year. Promotions and changes, that's a really good thing to do. I'm excited when I get to see those. I got one of those on Friday. So that's a good thing. In part-time returning, 16 total. I put in there, and that's the individuals I talked about for Parks and Rec, that, you know, they weren't there, and then now they come back. Total employees at the end of 2023, we had 127 full-time and 10 part-time. And that's your council and individuals like that. In the summer, as I said before, 27. We're adding up to 27 more people in that given time. All right, Liz, we're good. All right, this is where the fun stuff begins. I won't bore you with all of it, but you can certainly ask my important, I'd be glad to give you this with more specifics and details. I wanted to put this in your, in here for a cost factor. Kathy knows when it comes to BWC, she gets to see all those reports, and she's a financial expert on that end, right Kathy? She gets to take care of all that good stuff and separate the departments. But we had a decreased frequency from 10 claims in 2021 to seven, which is a really good thing in 2023. Losses decreased 39% from 2022 to 2024. We've got 2,000, 215,480 to 131,435 for the TML. And I'll explain all these definitions when we go further. Experience report indicates the city of Tiffin losses were 131,434, while cities of similar lost an average of 146. That means we're doing really, really well, and we have done well for years. And that's why when we have a work-related injury, I tell my staff, and then I also tell the department it's imperative that I know because there's lag time in there, and each time there's a lag time, there's more cost involved. So city of Tiffin outperformed what was expected, and I'm excited to say we've been doing that for quite a few years now. City participating in programs resulted in the 29,000 saving, 561 refunds during 2023. Kathy does the early bill discount, the Go Green, which is great, the lapse free, that's lapse free as far as payments. And I go to a safety council every single month to get that check that we get. And also, I also go to Safety Congress, which I'm going to in March at the end of this month. So city participating in programs resulted in those amounts. So when you look at the group rating, group retro is we're into a group. And in that group, it means you have to qualify to be in that group. There's certain groups that are involved. Maybe they do work like we do. So you have to qualify to do that. So it's a privilege to be in a group retro program. I want you to know that. And we have been for three years plus, I believe. I was looking at that earlier today. So that's good. They put you all in a group and see how you do, and that's how we get our rates that come up. So they like us. They haven't kicked us out yet. All right, Liz, thank you. Medical providers billed 157,000. You can see that. Ohio BWC paid 27,000, pretty good. So medical charges saved from entering city's future experience, 82% discount. That's where we have to respond right away. That's the 130,000 difference. 71%, 71% of your 2023 claims, five out of seven stayed under 5,000. That's huge. And that's why we would bring somebody in, if we bring them back, we try to offer them, which we need to, transitional duty. In other words, if they're able to work and come back and do something, fulfill their duties or something, maybe a transitional in that department per se, we like to bring them back to work. There's got to be an extreme reason that they're not able to come back to work. That's where I come in, and I get with the doctors and the employee and see what we can do, and of course, the supervisor. Four out of seven, 57% claims remain medical only. Again, that's a really good thing. Eight days off would be eight days off work. Once you get to the eighth day, they go back to the first day and start charging. Some graphs here, like I said, kind of hard to see, to squeeze all this in. But you're going to see down below on the graphs where I put the 2022, 23, and 24, these are published rates. It talks about losses and total limited losses. You look at 2022, we had, if you see the way up there, those prices, we are a lot less now. So again, we're doing much better. Last couple of years was tough. In the last probably two to three years, they stay on that reserve for four years on the top of five years, so they drop off after four years' time. All right, Liz, thank you. Total modified losses, that's why I said, these are your definitions. Total MAL, that equals actual claims cost, compensation, medical cost reverses for every claim occurring within the four-year experience I talked about. The TML will change from year to year as different claims years enter. And that's why I say the experience drops off. And that's why I say if we have a lumbar strain, anything like that, those are very costly claims. So you want something like that to drop off. Total limited losses, TLL is the anticipated losses. Because when you look at a claim, they'll say, what do you think? How long do you think they're going to be off? I can't predict that all the time, but that's why you have to have the great communication with your staff and with the physicians that are providing care for them. You have to make sure you follow up and don't have any of that lag time where maybe you missed something. We've had situations where maybe we couldn't get somebody into facility more local to get some treatment, and we've sent them elsewhere to get them some treatment. So that's worked out very well for us. And our employees are very receptive of that. They want to feel better. Believe me, they don't want to be anytime where they're not able to work. Both the TML and the TLL are factored into the role calculation when you determine your experience modifier. Rating history, as you see, this is where I talked about the 1% earlier, or I will, the current EMR. 107 was 2022, 110, which was not good in 2023. You see you're below 1, and that's great. Whenever you're below 1, they like to see that, and they don't see that often. So each year, they say, you guys are doing a really good job because that's not the standard when you look at other facilities like ours or cities. Okay, experience rating, this is where I said the total percentage applied to the base rate is determine the premium rates. This is where Kathy, you know, you get those reports, and it gives the information where if it's less than 1, which we are, it indicates fewer claim losses, and that's what we strive for, fewer claim losses than anticipated. They put us on a system, they say, being what you do, we have police, we have fire, we have public works, we have all these different individuals providing services for our city. So we're at a high risk rate. Well, we beat those levels for years. So that says a lot for our employees and our supervisor making the contacts to make this happen. If it's greater than 1, that indicates claims losses, which isn't a good thing, okay? Greater than anticipated, that'll result in a penalty. So that's why we strive to do what we do. So when I hound people and say, I need you to call me back, or I need to follow up, this is the reason I do that. So you take into account any adjustments, the claim cost or payroll as the most recent quarter, and Kathy has to take care of all these money factors. So, all right. This is just another report to let you know, lost time. Notice you don't see lost time in there. Very happy about that, okay? Lost time is any time you get over those eight days. That's why I say they're crucial. It's crucial that I hear about it in that timeframe so we can work on bringing you back to work. All right, Liz. HR duties, this is my only prop. This is my girl on the tightrope, okay, if I could have done this, but I didn't want to take any chances. So some days, you feel like you're balancing a tightrope. You come in, you got these goals, you got these sticky notes, and everything just seems to happen. So in the HR department, you perform many functions. I tried to really limit what I put in here. BWC Administrator, that's where I went into detail in that. That's handling all the claims, the contacts. Third-party administrator, which is the individuals that contact our employees to see how they're doing. They're the ones that do all our hearings, so I have a lot of contact with them. And then the managed care organization, they're the treatment advisor. They will advise the employees and say, okay, this is what the doctor's saying. Some may be approved and some may disapprove. That's where I have to make some of those decisions to say, I approve that or I disapprove or additional allowances. Like I said, there's a lot more detail I won't get into, but that's just what I do. Employee issues, also contact with supervisors pertaining to this. A lot of things that go behind that door that no one talks about, and they don't need to talk about. It's a safe zone. HR is someplace when some people go, oh, I got called HR. It's not a bad thing. I've got to say, I'm excited to say, after 13 years, 95% of times, it's really a good thing, okay? So liaison for all our benefit groups, I deal with the medical insurance, the Guardian, Cobra, Dental Vision. I solved as the Cobra for when employees go in and on benefits. So if you go on Cobra, you have a timeframe that you collect within that 60 days. I walk our employees through that. I tell them they're going to get this paperwork, and I tell them how it's going to flow. So there's no surprises when you get there. There's nothing worse than getting something in the mail and go, I have no idea what this is. That way, I try to explain to them. Even when somebody leaves employment, I try to do the exits with them and explain to them everything that's going to happen, okay? So not everybody takes the Cobra. It's highly expensive, and then there's a 2% premium on top of that. I also entered to Employee Navigator. I talked about this last year, which I really, really like now because I can do that like a 24/7. I can get in that system. I can check my employees' information. It's not a paper anymore, which saves a lot of time. It's really more work, actually, but in the long run, it works out even. But I really like it that I can pull up anything. If you call me and say, hey, what do I have? I can tell you right away. I don't have to go through a sheet of papers. I can tell you, not today. I've got it in that system, okay? So I take care of all that. Unemployment administrator, thank goodness, I haven't had to do any of those lately. But it's something I'm very, very familiar with. It's not something I'd like to do, but it's something I definitely have a history of doing in my past employer, and this for sure. I've done many hearings on that. Interviewing, that's always a pleasure, okay? We just had the opportunity to interview, didn't we, Kathy? It's a lot of fun. It's really exciting to interview people and get to know a little bit about them and pull things out of them and learn more about them. So it's fun in all aspects to doing that. Offer, we do an offer letter originally to tell them, hey, you know, we're looking at making you this offer. This is what your pay would be. I send them the benefit information. No more packet. I send it to them electronically and let them see everything ahead of time. So when they come to do the hiring, they're already prepared to know what to expect. They're not walking into a blank slate going, okay, I've never seen these things before. I try to do all that ahead of time so they know what the opportunity is as far as what they want to receive. And then they can ask questions when they're in with me, no pressure, and they have to do it within 30 days. No exceptions to that role. Physicals, police officers are much more extensive. So are the firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, because you can imagine what they do is more intense, and we have to make sure they're capable to do that. And the background checks, police department does that. That's saved a lot of money. And I love the fact that it's in-house because it's very, very convenient. After all is completed, I said I conduct the orientation. HR, once completed, I have to meet with Samantha Sugar, our Payroll Pension Benefits Manager. She's great for the completion of that hire. She does some on her end, and I do the others. And I do the follow-up with them for items that have to be done. Lexi Poll, Policies and Procedures for Employees, this is something we implemented like a year and a half ago, and it's great. It's got the policies and procedures in there. As far as police and fire have a Lexi Poll, and we have something. There's 52 policies in there, and Nick, I was going to tell you, I just saw one update. So I need to look at that and get the details on that. It was about family medical leave. So that's something we give to all our employees, and they're supposed to go in and do that checkoff list to say they've seen them. And that's something I try to do when I do orientation now. Instead of our basic orientation, I try to get them through those Lexi Poll policies to let them know. I do a sign-off sheet as well to show that they've actually seen these. And when you do an unemployment here, you know why that's so important, that you know that they've seen that. On here, you've got all departments. Bryce, you stole the show. I put you in the middle there, and it kind of looks a lot like ours. I tried to get that fire truck, police, dispatchers, courts, administration, sewer, public works, engineering, and tried to get everybody in there. So we've got a lot of great people here with a lot of different roles. FMLA, go through this quickly. You have to be here at least a year, work 1,250 hours in order to qualify. Three days plus, if you're going to take the family medical leave or you're hospitalized first day. That's another thing that I need to be aware about right away. I need to know within five days if I made aware I need to get with you and make sure I follow up on the paperwork. And that's a process in itself, but now I can do that online as well, which I really like. I can pull you in the system, have everything generated there. I put you in a folder and you're saved, so I can go back anytime I need to. So there's a lot of things that go with that, the forms that need to be filled out. And then a designation notice would let you know, hey, you're approved, what I said in there. You're approved, put your mind at ease. You know, I just have to make sure that their paperwork matches what the doctor says. And it doesn't always match, so I just make sure I get with the employee, and I make sure I get with the, maybe the medical facility to say, they'll say if I have a question. I would never do a HIPAA violation, but if they say, call me if you have questions, and I've had to do that because they didn't match, or maybe they did a typo, which is very common. I mean, they do a lot of these. So that's within your five days. So that, once I do all that, they're certified for leave under FMLA. And that's their approval. I'm the redhead in here, just letting you know. Okay, any given day, this is the city environment creating happiness. When you come in and say happy money, and like, oh, what's wrong with you? But, you know, got to start each day. That's a good one. All right, Liz, next one. This one, eight factors of happiness. This is a tough one because in HR, I deal with a lot of situations, a lot of people, a lot of questions, and they'll come and say, what do I do about this? I work with this employee, you know, I'm down on myself. I don't know what to do. How do I handle it? So a lot of people will take it upon themselves and blame themselves. It's not them. I said, they're not thinking about you when they leave here. Let it go. They're not thinking a thing about you when you leave here. So lack of suspicion and resentment. Don't resent what you don't know. Don't always think you're the first person on their mind. As far as running a grudge, you know, grudges are great, but they don't get you anywhere except for resentment and heartache. except for resentment and heartache. Number two, not living in the past. Let it go. Life goes on. People change. Preoccupation with past mistakes. Like I said, we're all human beings. It's okay. We're allowed to do that. It causes depression with people. They'll come in and tell me, oh, I made this mistake, and I heard them talking about me. And I said, okay, you're human. And I always say, did you kill anybody? I remember my boss saying that years ago. And I was devastated about a mistake I made. She goes, I said, no. She goes, let it go, Reamer. You're fine. I'm like, okay. So, you know, it was a big thing. And I took it as a big thing. I was very sad. I felt I disappointed them. She goes, that's nothing compared to things that are going on here. So, you know, but people take it to heart because they're very good employees and they work about what they're doing. Worry about that. Not wasting time and energy fighting things you cannot change. They'll come in and say, I don't like this. I don't like what they're doing. What can you do about it? Cooperate with life. I mean, I kind of say, you just have to go with it. I hate to say that, but it's okay. It'll get better as you study, and we'll do it together as a team. Staying involved with the living world, resist withdrawal and become under stress. It's okay. We're all stressed. And that's where I try to, we have an EAP program that I really, really like. I don't need to know any of the follow-up. All I know is I can direct them to a service. And I can even pull them up some therapeutic groups that's through our insurance, but I don't need to know any follow-up about that at all. Okay? And it is utilized, and I'm glad to hear that. Refuse to indulge in self pity. You know, I love myself. When life hands you a raw deal, though we all get that raw deal, but it's not just you. Okay, I said, it's not just you. So if one of those gets through life, then we can carry on the next day. Cultivate old-fashioned virtues. I say it. Sometimes in the past, isn't so bad the way we treated people because we think with the modern world, with social network and the Facebook and things like that. I've heard that over and over. I know they were talking about me on Facebook. I said, how do you know? You don't really know that. But you're taking that self pity and you're making yourself sick about that. Just, like I said, just look at it humorously and just have loyalty with what you're doing and why you're doing it. Don't expect too much from yourself. We're our own worst critics. You know, we think we did, like on this PowerPoint, Liz goes, Deb, you're fine. You know, because I just wanted to put so much more, but an effort of time. But find something bigger than yourself. All right? Some centered egotistical people store lowest only on test measures happiness. I said, we're all great people. I mean, it's a wonderful, I love when I bring people in, and we do, you know, from interviewing Kathy, we get, bring people in. I said, it's a great place to work. It really is. I mean, it's really a comfortable, family-like oriented place to work. Good times. These are the good times. I'm almost there. We've got many heroes that do not wear capes, but I said they should. Two people last week, I said, you should wear a cape. HR has the pleasure to contact and do the interviews and hopefully give them an opportunity to work for this great city and its wonderful employees. As a city, a Tiffan employee, we offer something others may not. We're able to do the step increases, which is one, two, and three. That's exciting when you hire people and you say, hey, you're going to start at this level. Next year, you're automatically going to be that. The third year, guess what? You're going to be that goal. Okay? Plus, if you get a race in between those times. And then we also have very good benefits. I know that because I see the comparisons and I have people calling me. So I'm here to tell you, we have very good benefits. I had somebody the other day that had a $15,000 deductible. I'm not kidding. And that's what it is. And I said, that's just what it is. So I'm very grateful we have plans to choose from the base and the buyout. And an atmosphere that strives to make our members feel like part of a family. These are all on top of the regular salary. We have something that's called longevity, and that's one of the things I got to do yesterday, which was fun for somebody. So we add those in as well. So there's a lot to look forward to when you look at our ordinances. And we try to tell people with that when they come in. When I do orientation, I walk them through that. Retirement plan for the public service field of employment, that's what we have. I get a lot of studies from the HR groups to say, what do you guys do? I say, we're not you. I can't answer, we're a public entity. I can't just say we do this because we're different than anybody else. And that's why I say, that's the plans that we have. All right, Liz? All right, Liz, you want to do the next one? Walking away into paradise and grateful for each day I get to spend with you all. That's it. Any questions? No, we're good. Okay. Bryce, that was really nice of you to stay.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
For opening your eyes to the world of HR. Awesome.
Fun place to be.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Clerk of Counsel, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say a few words about some of the ordinances that we have that you'll be voting on tonight, the ones that have the third reading that have budget adjustments. I'm referring to 2415, 17, and 19. And I just wanted to say that 15, that is, we are appropriating a grant for the police department. They applied for one for continuing professional training, and we're granted that. So we are appropriating that in the budget. So that's what you're voting on for that one. 24-17 is all about, we had several advances that we had to do at the end of the year for some of our major projects. It is an audit finding at the end of the year if you have a fund that is out of balance, like in negative balance. So at the end of the year, I did these advances, some from the sewer fund, some from general fund, to make sure that those funds were in balance. So now, advances have to be returned within a year of being done. So we got all of that money in now. So now we can send those back to the funds that actually they came from. And then we're also approving of moving those funds back over. So it's, we're appropriating the money, and then we're approving of moving it back over. 24-19 is a NOPEC grant that the Park and Recreation Department got approved, and they want to use that for special events. So I just wanted to give you kind of a explanation of those three because they're third reading ordinances. And does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Director of Law, Zachary Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Two things. One, the administrative assistant in our office, the prosecutor's office will be out on vacation. And then we're going to have someone from our private law firm kind of shadow and fill in a little bit while she's out. So just for your all perspective, you, one of the things you have for the law director, a ordinance is a stipend, and this is just one of the ways that we can use that to fill in the gaps when we need to. The other is, thank you to Mrs. Mayor for coming and hanging out with us, because without you, we'd have nobody in the crowd tonight. It's too nice of a night. So. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
Just have one, excuse me, Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F24-14, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the OPWC Lone Street Paving Project.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F24-14 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 24-22.
That concludes the written communications.
We are now under oral communications. If there's anyone who would like to step up to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Seeing none, we're now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2024-24, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Urban Waters Federal Partnership Tree Planting Grant to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 2024-24. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of Resolution 24-24.
There is a motion for passage of Resolution 2024-24. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2024-24, and I will, is there any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Excuse me, Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Here.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-13, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance enacting Section 139.07 of the Tiffan codified ordinances, authorizing the city administrator to maintain a file for prequalification. I'm sorry.
I don't have that.
You skipped 27.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I must have put it out of order. Okay, start that one again. Resolution number 2024-27, introduced by John Hayes, a resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Rod Morrison to serve a four-year term on the Planning Commission from January 1, 2024 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2024-27. Councilmember Hayes.
I move to pass Resolution 2024-27.
Thank you. There was a motion to pass Resolution 2024-27. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner. There's a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2024-25, I'm sorry, 27. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-27 passes with a vote of five to zero. I did, go ahead.
Yeah, so Resolution 24-24 had an emergency provision.
Yeah. Are we able to, what would be, I guess, the right order to do this at this point?
You can have a motion for the emergency to vote on that.
Is that appropriate to do that now or in other business?
I would do it now.
Okay, wonderful. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for the emergency on Resolution 24-24.
Thank you. There is a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Councilmember Jones, is there any discussion on that motion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency has been added to the passage of Resolution 2024-24. Thank you, Law Director. We are now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 2024-13, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance enacting Section 139.07 of the Tiffan codified ordinances, authorizing the city administrator to maintain a file for prequalifications of professional design firms.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-13. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-13.
Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2024-13. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Councilmember Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-13 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-15, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $27,861.19 into the police budget.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-15. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-15.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I second it.
There is a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2024-15. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-15 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-17, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the CSO 24 and 30, Benner Interceptor, federal urban paving and OPWC funds, and, I'm sorry, and approve the return of the advances to the sewer and general funds.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-17. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-17.
Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes.
A second.
There's a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2024-17. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-17 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-19, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $2,000 into the Park Department budget.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-19. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-19.
Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2024-19. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman. I'm sorry. And Jones.
Yes.
Off the line.
Ordinance 24-19 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-22, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $18,750 into the OPWC Lone Street Paving Budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2024-22.
Ordinance number 2024-23, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance authorizing the installment of two streetlights in City Lot 2 and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2024-23. Councilmember Jones.
I'd like to make a motion to council to ask for the suspension, the three reading rule suspension for ordinance 2024-23.
Is there, go ahead.
I move for passage of ordinance 2024-23, suspending the city council's three reading Immediate passage.
Law Director, do you want to weigh in for us?
Yeah, we just got to get the wording a little right. So we just got to make clear in your motion that it's for immediate pa, or not immediate passage, but also the emergency.
Okay, gotcha.
So if you want to restate your motion, Mr. Hayes, and then, or Mr. Jones, if you want to restate your motion.
I'm not sure who I am today.
Yeah, if you want to restate your motion.
Okay, so, okay, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Okay. There is a motion to suspend council's three reading rule, declaring an emergency for passage of ordinance 2024-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll now ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage of ordinance 2024-23.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman. I'm sorry. And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-23 passes with a vote of five to zero. Okay. Getting there. We are now under other business. Is there any other business to come before this committee? Seeing none, we will adjourn at 8:09.
Not bad. Even with all the presentations.